So give it just a couple of moments so people can make their way into the room.
Just let me know when we're ready. Hello and good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting. We're waiting just a few more minutes for more attendees to get settled in. Thank you for your patience. All right. Hello and good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this October 28th special meeting of the Board of Directors for Spokane Public Schools. Just a few quick meeting notes. Guests attending the meeting of the school board are welcome to observe using audio and/or visual tools and Zoom. However, we are not allowed to receive public comments during special meetings. So if there's anything that members of the public that are attending or not attending would like to share with the school board this evening, feel free to email us at schoolboard@spokanschools.org. Thank you. And with that being said, we'll jump right into it. We have item 3A, Spokane Public School School reopening update presented by Dr. Adam Swinier, Dr. Mark Anderson, and Heather Bybee. How's it going, everybody?
Good. Thank you, President Haynes, other members of the board. And I know we've got a couple of board members that are logging on as we speak and we'll get started. So Dr. Anderson is going to pull up the presentation. And we are here this evening to provide an update on our process of phasing our students back to in-person instruction. We've provided updates at each of our regular school board meetings regarding our reopening plan for both distance learning and our students that are attending instruction in our school buildings. And the purpose of tonight is specifically to discuss the phasing of kindergarten students and our ongoing conversations with Dr. Lutz and the Spokane Regional Health District regarding the continuation of phasing students back into our schools. So as we begin on the first slide, the school board has consistently communicated from the beginning of the pandemic that we will follow the guidance and regulations of our public health officials that directly oversee Spokane County. We received initial guidance from the Department of Health this summer that outlined a framework for school reopening, and it was based on cases per 100,000 citizens. We are currently in Spokane County in the high-risk range, as you are all well aware. And within that framework, the allowable educational modalities permit students attending in-person instruction in small groups or attending in cohorts for early luners, students that receive special education services, students that reserve English language development services, and other students that are farthest from educational injustice. In the summer, when those guidelines were originally shared, our local health official, Dr. Lutz, recommended that all school districts in our area begin the year in a distance learning format. We complied, as has been our intent, to follow the guidance from public health officials, and we began the year in distance learning. We've engaged in ongoing conversations with Dr. Lutz over these many weeks. It seems like it's been a really long time, even though just two or three months have passed, talking with our plan, and you're going to hear a little bit from Dr. Anderson again about what that planning process has looked like in our schools, both in terms of our safety protocols, our cleaning protocols, and how educational services will be delivered to students. As we continue to have those conversations, Dr. Lutz provided guidance to area school districts and support for phasing students back to in-person instruction in the grade band of kindergarten, first, and second grade. He indicated as part of that guidance that this should be done slow and methodically with a very close eye on how adherence is to safety requirements and protocols, as well as very close monitoring of the data that we're seeing in our schools in terms of the occurrence of COVID in our buildings and the rate of transmission. He's indicated to us in those conversations that he's evaluating multiple metrics in developing his support and guidance for how schools move forward. This includes not just the overall case count in the county, but also test positivity rates, cluster spread versus community spread, transmission rates inside of our schools, looking at numerous factors to include the detrimental public health impact to students when they are not attending in-person instruction. So as we have consistently stated, we're going to follow those guidelines, and we're going to return students to in-person instruction as soon as possible, based on when it's determined safe to do so. We are hearing, as we engage in these conversations and we listen to state and local officials, the recognition that the occurrence rate and transmission rate in schools across the state, and you heard even the governor reference that in his press conference yesterday, that the transmission rate in schools is a factor to be considered as schools are considering how best to move forward in the COVID-19 pandemic. So we began our process on October 7th with our kindergarten students. So they've been attending now about three weeks. And now we're engaging in you with a conversation about what additional grade levels look like. So before we take a look at some of the data that we're seeing in our schools that we're tracking really closely with our health services team in partnership with the Spokane Regional Health District, Dr. Anderson is going to share a little bit about what this plan is entailed of.
So we have been closely working with the Health Department since June, actually, and a large team of staff, ranging from teachers to administrators to support staff, planning the protocols that we would have in place and that we do have in place with our kindergarten students. So those include students and staff doing a daily health check about the signs for COVID-19, including taking temps. We've had all of our staff, our students, our visitors to schools wearing masks in our school facilities. Our students have adjusted really well to wearing masks in schools. We've had our students in our before and after-school childcare program who actually, since March, we provided daycare for our first responders and medical staff, and they adapted really quick to wearing masks. We give students mask breaks by giving them a chance to take down their masks, go outside, those types of things. We have a rigorous process for keeping the social distancing requirement, both when students are seated in classrooms, as well as moving from one area to the other. We've been teaching our students, kindergartners, and our staff frequent hand washing. We even have videos on how to do it that the Health Department recommended. Then our custodial staff and our teaching staff, actually, we have lots, we were fortunate to, through CARES dollars, to get lots of cleaning and disinfection materials, everything from hand sanitizer to cleaning agents that are environmentally friendly, as well as friendly to, for staff to use around students. And then finally, our Director of Health Services, Becky Doughty, and her team of nurses have been trained with a very robust contact tracing and quarantine protocol for contract. If someone has been around someone that's had COVID-19 and/or have had it themselves, there's a very rigorous process that we have in place, again, to protect our students and staff from contracting COVID-19 in our buildings. And I'm happy to report that we've had hardly any cases in our schools, and that's one of the factors that Dr. Lutz is looking for. You're on mute, Adam, there.
One of the things that has been a reality is that not everyone agrees how best to move forward in this circumstance. And we have received feedback from, from community stakeholders that have been adamant that our schools should be closed, and they lay out data to support that, organizations to point to, and make a case that our schools should be closed. We have an equal number of folks that are communicating with us, that are advocating that our schools should be open, and that, and they're presenting the data that supports that argument, and the organizations that are backing that, that viewpoint. Our community doesn't agree, and that's been an ongoing topic of our conversations as we work through this as a school district and as a community about what's the best way to move forward. And as we said so many times, we're going to rely on our local health officials at the state and regional level to forecast for us what direction that we should go, and we're going to look really closely at the data and make interpretations of what does this data say about how it's going inside of our schools. What you see here is the COVID data that we have seen since October 5th to October 27th. The first category in the left is current confirmed cases. So this is any positive case in which the individual tested positive and entered the school for any amount of time. So we've had situations where a staff member has tested positive, and they went back into the school to grab their laptop and left. They were there for less than 10 minutes. We're counting that as a case because we feel that that level of transparency is important, is really important for, for us as a community and as a district. So at this time, we've had 34 confirmed cases of an individual entering our school building since October 5th that has tested positive. The next category is staff and student exposure. So this is individuals who were determined to have had potential close contact in a school with a confirmed case. When we receive a report that an individual has tested positive, we have a team of nurses that have been absolutely incredible. They're working seven days a week, early in the morning, late into the evening, Saturday and Sunday nights, reaching out and contact tracing, and they've contact traced over 500 individuals to quickly determine who may have had close contact and who needs to be quarantined. So in this date range, we've had 61 individuals that were, have determined to have had close contact with someone who had tested positive. This number is suggestive of our ability to maintain six-foot social distancing. If this number was very high, then that would be reflective that we're not doing a very good job maintaining six-foot distancing and social distancing. The next category, number of individuals in quarantine. So an individual can be in quarantine for a case that did not happen in our school system. So an example of that is we receive a call from a staff member or a student, a family, and they have attended a family gathering or a social event outside of our schools with somebody that they know is tested positive. And so at that point, we communicate our expectations for them to quarantine. We count them in that number of 172. So the 61 that you see in the previous column, that's the number of people that we've determined to have had close contact that we have said need to be in quarantine from something that's happened in our building. The 172 number, that reflects the number of individuals that are connected to our school system, staff or student that has been in quarantine either for something that has happened outside of school or inside of school in terms of exposure. The next column, the, the second column to the right, cases originating outside the school. So this is confirmed cases of transmission with no link to the school building as determined by the contact tracers. So you can see here that 33 of our 34 confirmed cases, the contract tracers have determined, based on their work, that the end of pitch, that transmission occurred outside of our school building. It happened at a barbecue. It happened at a social gathering. It happened because they, they habitate with somebody who had COVID. So the transmission, as determined by those contract tracer, has happened outside of our schools. And then you can see the column, the last column on the right, cases originating inside of our school. So this is confirmed cases of transmission with a link to the school building as determined by the contact tracers. And so you can see, we've had one in this three-week window. We think that's reflective of staff following protocols, robust contract tracing, six-foot social distancing. We think that, that those measures are reflective of the data that we're seeing, and this is the data that Dr. Lutz is evaluating and is connected to his references about the transmission rate in, in our schools. You can see here, just for context, this data is for all 54 of our buildings. So we have students that, obviously, we have kindergarten students attending. There's about 1,700 of them attending across our 34 elementary schools. That's about 96 classrooms. And we also have special education students, students receiving ELD services that are attending in our middle and high schools in small groups. And so we have over 2,000 kids across our 54 buildings, as well as many staff members that are coming to work each day in our schools to either provide in-person instruction or provide distance learning inside of their, their classroom. So across 54 schools, over 2,000 students, this is the occurrence rate that we're seeing in the level of transmission that's happening in our schools. This is one of the things Dr. Lutz has referenced, as we have been in conversation with him, that although the case counts are, have been high and have been in an elevated range, that what's happening in our schools is, needs to be evaluated in that context, and the rate of transmission in our schools needs to be evaluated in that context as we make decisions about how best to move forward. Next slide. So based on those multiple metrics that Dr. Lutz has indicated, he continues to support phasing our youngest students back for in-person instruction. As I referenced, the key consideration is that transmission rate observed inside of our schools. We're going to continue to watch this. We've been successful, and our intent is to continue to be successful and to follow the plan that we've put in place and watch this really closely and not become complacent in our diligence to watch the numbers, to be responsive, to maintain communication with Dr. Lutz, and to continue to adhere to the safety protocols and continue to do this slowly and methodically per his guidance. So with that said, we are anticipating a potential timeline for first grade to begin attending in-person instruction on November 9th. One of the pieces of feedback, and we have held listening sessions with our kindergarten teachers over the last couple of weeks. I've had the opportunity to, to visit many of those classrooms and walk and talk with kindergarten teachers and talk with principals. One of the pieces of feedback that has been very positive is starting on an alternating schedule. So students are split into two groups. A group attends on one day, B group attends the next. We did eight days of an alternating schedule with kindergarten teachers, and we heard very positive feedback regarding that approach in terms of teachers' ability to make sure in small groups that students understand the protocols, they understand where they're, they're supposed to stay seated, they understand their space. Many of our kindergarten teachers have used tape and marked out kind of with a little bubble that their kindergartners are supposed to be in. They, they've done a really good job of teaching those expectations. Our kindergartners have been fantastic, keeping those masks on and maintaining their distancing. And that alternating schedule has really supported that, to the extent that our kindergarten teachers have asked almost universally, can we please start every year on an alternating schedule to really help make that a smooth, positive transition for students? So we would begin first grade on November 9th, and they would participate in alternating schedules through November 20th. And then we are identifying November 30th as a tentative start date for second grade. Pending that, we continue to see a level of transmission that we've occurred, has occurred thus far in our schools. We're going to, as I said, we're going to watch that really closely. And then we will move forward based on our evaluation of kindergarten first grade being in our buildings to move forward with second grade on November 30th. Again, we would utilize an alternating schedule to be determined. So if you take a little bit closer look, this is what the, the dates play out. So November 9th and 10th, that's the first AB day. There's no school on the 11th. And then the 12th and the 13th, we continue on, and then through that following week. And then November 20th is the first day where all students would be attending at the same time. As Dr. Anderson referenced, significant planning has gone in to prepare the first-grade classrooms to make sure that they're set up accordingly. And you're going to hear from Heather about how we supported kindergarten teachers and how we offered multiple opportunities for families and for staff to receive information from different modalities and, and do the best that we can to make sure everybody feels prepared to be successful. So Heather?
Yeah, so as we look forward to supporting first-grade teachers, bringing their students back, we intend to host a series of optional webinars throughout the coming days on different topics, health and safety protocols, small group instruction, how to teach, and so keep kids socially distanced, how to keep them engaged, those type of things will be hosting throughout next week. And so when, when we're talking about what the day looks like, we're looking at an 8:30 to 2:25 school day in that we're really trying to account for kids wearing the masks, although we've heard really positive feedback from the kindergarten teachers that that wasn't the struggle they anticipated. There was lots of anxiety and concern about that, but everywhere I've been, Dr. Swinier's been, Sean, Plant, we've all been around, and, and it's, it's actually pretty remarkable to see how adaptable our kids are and our teachers are. So with that timeframe, not only does it keep families on consistent schedules, so if you have kids both in remote learning, if you have an older student and a student in the primary grades, your family's schedule can stay consistent. It also gives us a little bit of extra time to make sure we're following those rigorous cleaning protocols so that we can ensure that every day when kids return, that they're coming to a clean environment, that things have been wiped down following the guidelines that the safety team has outlined. In addition, it allows our transportation to get everybody where they need to be at that time. And while this is happening, while we have our classroom teachers focused on the students in person in that AB rotation that Adam referenced, the district will be offering centralized learning opportunities for the students on the off days. Just like we did in kindergarten, we held those class meetings. They were super exciting. We have a great team of curriculum coordinators that kind of support that, and they would choose a theme about being brave and lay out the day's learning so that the classroom teachers could really focus on the kids in front of them. And we, you know, we keep trying to remind ourselves, these first graders coming back, they didn't get to finish their kindergarten year, right? They kind of left abruptly, and so we really want to make sure that they feel comfortable and safe coming back to this environment. So that's kind of what the day looks like when they move into their instructional period. They'll still have the same opportunities that the kindergartners had and that everyone has, which is they're going to give music, they're going to give PE, they're going to get science and art, they're going to get opportunities to take mask breaks. We've learned a lot from our kindergarten teachers. As Adam said, we've had listening sessions, and they've really been able to kind of say, hey, you guys really got this right. I mean, the one thing they asked us for was better paper towels. That, those are the type of things that we've heard from them. So we think that we've learned a lot. Lunch will be in the classroom. There'll be more outside breaks, more recess. We've really said to attend to students' social emotional needs, make sure that those are really cared for, so that then we can start talking about academics. Make sure, Adam, can you go to the next slide? Music breaks. We have all of our support staff back, ready to welcome students. We'll remind them, hey, we're here for you. We're all one big family. So our administrators, our counselors, our MTS intervention people will, will be there, ready to greet those students. Excited to kind of say, welcome back to Logan, welcome back to Liddgerwood. As I said, we'll be offering learning experiences on the AB rotation so that the teachers can focus on the kids in front of them. That, that seemed to be a real relief for the teachers because they, they were so happy that they could spend the time with the eight to 10 students that were there with them and teach them all the safety protocols. We also heard from our administrators that it's the least anxious our kindergartners were as they came back. No tears, no clinging to mom and dad's leg. You know, they knew who they were looking for. And so our first-grade teachers are really excited to see those kids face-to-face. So with that, we are offering an all-staff kind of intro webinar. We would host on Monday in the afternoon, and then a family webinar that night to kind of answer all those safety questions, just like we did for kindergarten. And then following Monday, we would host those kind of specialized training opportunities for teachers to kind of talk through what instruction they would need to consider. And then as we look to second grade, we would host the staff webinar on Monday, the 16th, and then the family webinar that evening at 6:30. All of those links will be available. In addition, our website is built out with a ton of training videos. They kind of just help families understand, like, what does it look like? What, like, what does the mask-wearing look like? What are questions they have about doing the health checks? All of those things can be found on our website. And, and we, you know, always hold a place in the webinars for questions and answers. So we try and collect as many as we can, answer as many as we can, and then push out an FAQ after and make the webinar available for families who couldn't attend at that time.
So with that, we are intending on continuing to closely monitor the data, continue to engage in robust contact tracing, continue implementing our reopening plan, and continue to follow the guidance of public health officials regarding additional grades and how we move forward. And, you know, again, we recognize this, this, this is hard. This is hard for our community. It's hard for our families. It's hard for our staff, and this has been hard for our kids. And, you know, even during this meeting. And, you know, even during this meeting, I've already received some emails of praise, excitement. Frustration and concern, it's both out there. And we're going to continue to listen to public health officials, we're not going to start the practice of picking and choosing. What guidance and regulations to follow and what we won't. We're going to continue to steadfastly rely on those officials that oversee Spokane County. And we're going to continue to do the best we can to to listen and to answer questions and to process. With 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 our stakeholders that are feeling opposite about the situation. And what the best way to move forward is. So we will continue those conversations, we'll continue watching our data closely, talking with Dr. Lutz. And pending any feedback or guidance you have, we'll begin the process of preparing our staff to phase back first and second grade. So with that, any questions or comments you might have?
This is Mike, I appreciate your plan and I definitely agree wholeheartedly that the precautions that. That everyone has taken have worked really well, visited a couple of schools on Monday. And just it's amazing to see the kindergartners all with masks on and I think I only saw one case where it just came down like this far. And a teacher was like, can you move that back up again? And, you know, teachers very happy to have their little ones back in school. And I also agree that we learned a lot from from this process, you know, and I think this is the the plan you laid out. It makes a lot of sense, it builds on what we did with kindergarten successfully. And I very much support the reopening, I guess my only question is. Have we learned enough to go a little bit faster, you know, the two weeks of A B schedules? Can you maybe talk a little more about the reasoning for that as opposed to one week, for example? And then, you know, any flexibility to to move second grade in, I guess I can't. It's hard to think of, given the success we have had with kindergarten, that that would create safety risks going going much faster. But maybe you have other logistical concerns that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the lenses that we've worked, that we've used throughout this is is to be slow and methodical. And as we evaluated how many days of a rotating schedule we might utilize. We we heard significant feedback from our first grade teachers about. Just the the our kindergarten students, they're coming into environment and that's all they know, it's their first experience. So staying in their desk, not having carpet time, not being able to get up and move around the class maybe as freely as they normally would. They have no schema on that, so they're coming in and this is masks and 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 having a little bubble set out for them, that's all they know at this point. Our first grade teachers have some, a little bit of wondering about the level of retraining that might be necessary for first grade. Because they're going to come in with the schema that they had on what first what kindergarten was like and the movement and how their day looked. And so that was really a significant part of the feedback that we took from teachers. And and their interest to have those additional alternating days to make sure that this can be done really thoughtfully and safely with first grade. And then our intent is to then reevaluate with second grade. Maybe potentially not needing the same number of of alternating days. The spacing between phasing and grade levels, we're factoring in just the calendar in general and and kind of days off. November is a little bit of a unique month. And then as well as wanting to make sure that we've provided an adequate amount of time to understand the success of adding another grade level. Before we we move forward, I do think that after kindergarten and first grade. I think we will have a reasonable amount of information. And a reasonable amount of of practice in place to potentially move faster. Depending on the guidance from Dr. Lutz and the guidance from the school board. So these dates are, they're they're fluid in the sense of we're working to make the best decision we can. On the information that we have and what we've seen so far.
Okay, thank you. So I guess maybe for that second grade webinar, maybe even in the first grade webinar. Just being clear that 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 second grade might not be two weeks of A B and would be would be, I'd appreciate that just to be able to accelerate that little bit if we can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I do, I do think Director Wiser, we are starting to hear more and more, even just in the last week. A narrative across the state around the transmission rate inside of schools. And how that is, you know, this is something that is has evolved every step of the way. Our public health officials continue to evaluate what's happening. And I am hearing at a state level that, and we heard the governor say it yesterday in his press conference. That we need to really be looking at the transmission rate in our schools and be evaluating how that might impact. How quickly we reopen and what the next step will be. So I anticipate that this is going to be reevaluated at the state level as we get farther into the year. And and our health officials are able to look at the data that we're seeing from the schools that that have kids back in their buildings.
I'll just echo the Wiser's comments, appreciate for such a a large school district that we are. That, you know, our senior leaders and educators have provided so much input. And using our continual learnings to be as adaptive as possible. And that's, that's just really important and I agree, we have to follow, keep following the path of. Following our guidelines of our public health officials. So, thank you.
This is Nikki Lockwood, I also, you know, appreciate that we are following the public health guidelines in walking a tight rope. Of, you know, community health and safety and, you know, the educational needs of our students and families. So there's, there's no great answers in that there's going to be people that are unhappy on both sides. But there's no great answers because we're in a really difficult situation and, you know, a pandemic that is brand new for us. So I do find hope in thinking that will, that our public health experts will continue to learn. And evolve our our decision-making tree as far as what we're doing. And I think it's important that we continue to communicate that as simply as possible to our community. So they kind of, they know where where those decisions are coming from. I was talking to a parent today and she said, I just want to know. Is get on the website and figure out, you know, why you're making these decisions. So as clearly as we can communicate those, I think that that's that's helpful. So I have a couple of questions with the kindergarten, you know, when we brought back kindergartners, what was the net change of kindergartners? Like moving to the the virtual, the S V A, Spokane Virtual, so the the virtual online option versus, you know. Switching back to their neighborhood schools.
Yeah, we've had, we've had, we had approximately a hundred kindergartners request to move into S V A. We anticipated that we'd have some requests. We also filled in a number of first and second grade requests as families began to anticipate. That their grade level might be next and we've we've worked really hard to accommodate where families want to be. We also had approximately fifty students that requested to go from the virtual academy. And phase back to in-person instruction. And then we've also seen a number of students that had, were were planning on not attending kindergarten at all this year. Come and enroll in our schools, provided that kindergarten started fairly early in October. They decided and instead of waiting the year, they decided to go ahead and attend. So we saw a little bit of movement in in just about every direction in terms of what families were were wanting to do.
So pretty even, it sounds like.
It balanced out for the most part. You know, I I don't, I shouldn't say that lightly because we have a team of really, really smart people. That work really hard to balance the puzzles of thirty-four schools and all that staffing. So they've worked really hard to make that puzzle work and to be able to accommodate the requests.
I appreciate that's really more complicated than a usual school year when there's there's changes that happen. So, let's see, I just also wanted to say thanks to all the, all the people working to keep the staff and the students safe. I've seen masks being worn really consistently as well when I visited schools and I just appreciate that. You know, knowing how many employees we have, you know, that that could impact the community if we, you know, get sick. So I appreciate that, I hope it goes just as well for the first graders and the second graders. So is there, so a friend, you know, a parent had a question, is there an upper limit in the case counts? I mean, I know it's such a complex decision, it's not just the case counts. But I think those that are more cautious or, you know, when would we not? Or when, when would we not start bringing back more kids or when would we retreat? Do we have that kind of metric ready to go or?
Yeah, so what what we've heard from our public health officials is they they don't have a proverbial line drawn in the sand. But what we have heard and are hearing from them more and more, they're they're consistently talking about the occurrence rate for that particular age group. So from zero to nine, what's the occurrence rate? What's the transmission rate inside of our schools happening? And what's the occurrence rate from from our staff, I just wanted to keep our our staff and our students safe. So Director Lockwood, I think those are the the two metrics that they're watching really, really closely as they evaluate. Our ability to open schools and I think there's some recognition that the case counts in Spokane County. You know, there isn't a collective effort in our community to to follow the safety guidelines and wear masks and social distance. And so our ability countywide to have a collective effort to reduce the overall county case counts continues to be a challenge. As as we, you know, see gatherings take place in our community and and, you know, as part of the Spokane metro area. So I I know that they're, you know, they'll continue to look at the overall county case count, but they're 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 really watching those numbers. And what's happening inside of our school building and how, the extent to which COVID is being transmitted inside of our school buildings.
That that makes sense, I am, and you know, if a kindergartner can wear a mask all day at school. And then hopefully we could have the adults, you know, follow suit because it's so important to fully getting back to school. And I know that we're impacted by adjacent communities as well, so.
The vast majority of the cases in our school district have been adults contracting COVID outside of our schools. That's, that's what's driving it, it hasn't.
Just looking at all my notes, I think I I think I got all my questions answered, so thank you for all the good work.
This is Erin, I do want to thank everybody, just the hard work, as everybody said, that Paul have put in. I can't, I can't even begin to imagine, so it's very much appreciated. I do have a question for Rebecca Doughty and your team, I know you're working so hard. And you've been, part of the reason why we've had such great outcomes here is because of the contract tracing that you and your team or contact tracing. You and your team have involved in anticipating that we're going to be bringing in more more students. How are you feeling about the addition of people?
Thank you for asking that, we are prepared and we have our process, we developed it, we have it dialed in. So we do, we start at the crack of dawn and we go until we can't go anymore at night and we are prepared. And I think this was very helpful, having this this phasing in process so that we could get students in the building. And really experience what this was going to look like, so, yeah, my team is very prepared for what's coming.
Well, I know you're one wheel on a cog, so thank you very much, yeah.
Becky and her team have done an amazing job and, you know, our next agenda item, I'd be remiss not to mention. Our next agenda item is about our our replacement levy. We're funded by the state of Washington for five nurses for our school district, thirty thousand kids, fifty-four school buildings. Our local levy funds forty of our forty-five nurses. Without a local levy, we would not be able to contact trace, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we need to do to keep kids safe. Both in a distance learning environment, because our nurses are still meeting needs in a distance learning environment and fielding questions and supporting kids. Particularly around mental health, but they're they're playing an invaluable role helping us transition back into school buildings.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, everybody, just to reiterate what everyone was saying and Dr. Swinney, your comments just now. Rebecca, you and your team basically sell yourselves, especially during a time like this. And and it can't be overstated how important you all are to the daily operations of our school district during a normal time. And 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 that just increases exponentially during these times right now, so thank you for all of your hard work. Thank all of the staff and all of the parents and all the families that that are taking this seriously enough to make sure. That that we're keeping our children in our schools safe so that we can continue to move forward as a community together. I I am happy to to hear that we are phasing in first grade. I wonder what went behind the thought process of scheduling a preliminary date for second grade. My only, my only worry is is that I don't want that to be seen as a confirmed date. And disappoint and families start to plan for that and and we may have to disappoint, hopefully that's not the case, right? So I was just wondering what went into that thought process.
Yeah, so we we were, we were very judicious about doing that when we face kindergartners in. To not establish, you know, extended timelines for each grade. We did feel like that that is a balancing act in the sense of wanting to give our principals and our teachers. A a sense of what that timeline would look like and how they might prepare and how they might prepare their students. And as well as factoring in just some of the the anxiety of the unknown that we've heard from from families and staff. And so wanting to do the best we can to to really think about all those factors. And identify the thirtieth as a tentative date pending things go well and be really thoughtful about, you know, messaging that out. That 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 is a tentative date that we have to watch closely, ensure that first grade goes as well as kindergarten has gone. But it was really about planning, preparing, and it was also about alleviating some of the anxiety of of the unknown that our staff have experienced. And as we all know, our our staffer, they've been through a lot and and they're tired and they're weary. And so having having some sense of timing, we felt was important in this particular iteration of our planning.
Yeah, no, I I definitely can appreciate that, I know, I know the value and and people being able to see the light at the end of the tunnel. I know we've talked about that a lot in the in the past few months. Also, I can't thank our custodians enough either for keeping our school buildings clean. So, yeah, just, just thank you, everybody.
You want to hear, if you want to see a hero go to a school, there's a lot of heroes in our schools right now.
I've been, I've been making my rounds, I've caught Clint, he thinks I have a tracker on his car, so.
Yeah, and I I was right on the hill with Director Wiser too at Balboa. So I, our, our staff appreciate seeing our district leadership and in our school board within our schools when when they can make it. And but they they greatly appreciate your your support and your appreciation as you extend it in our meetings.
Awesome. So are there any other comments or questions from staff or the board? All right, Dr. Swinney, is that all on this topic?
It is, we will move forward and Dr. Anderson will continue to facilitate his his team, his reopening team. And and move forward with implementation.
All right, great, thanks, and thanks, Heather. So we're moving on to item three B, replacement E P O levy discussion presented by Dr. Adam Swinney, Dr. Mark Anderson and Cindy Coleman. Hey Cindy.
President Haynes, members of the board, this is a follow-up item to our discussion last week about our local levy. We talked a little bit already about our our reliance and how it is foundational to the educational experience. And supports we provide our students, well Cindy has a presentation that she's going to bring up.
Did that work?
It did.
Awesome.
So just really quickly, just the purposes of tonight, review some of the key themes of the replacement levy. Review the uses of the replacement. So just really quickly, just the purposes of tonight, review some of the key themes of the replacement levy, review the uses of the replacement levy. Cindy's going to share more context on the budget forecast, discuss the replacement levy scenarios and our, our hope is tonight, the Board of Directors will identify their desired levy amount that then impacts our rate for our ballot initiative.
So there are some themes for the levy that you'll see as this, Cindy shares with you the kind of the, the number piece, but this is a replacement levy. This is not a new levy. Our levy that we passed in February of 2018 is going to be expiring. And so it is replacing that and it does provide foundational services and activities for our, our students and the scenario, all the scenarios that we're going to share with you. When you look at all of the thing, all of the tax rates that go for our schools, the replacement levy, the bond debt service levy, the state school levy, as, and there's two of them that are assessed on property. All the scenarios that we're going to show you tonight are going to be lower than they were in 2018 and before. So we're trying to be very judicious in thinking about the amount we would ask for voters to support, especially given, you know, the current conditions with COVID and unemployment and those kinds of things. But all of the scenarios we're also going to show you will require us to tighten our belt. There will still be some regardless of how, the, if we even go to the max that we're allowed, it will require us to make some budget reduction. It'll allow us to restore some of the programs that make a well-rounded education for kids and for our students that our community really have come to expect us to provide, but there'll still be some areas that we will need to adjust our, our spending patterns. So with that, just a reminder, these are the kinds of things that the levy fund and Dr. Swinney had done a good job talking about nurses. You know, the state funding formula for basic education funds for nurses. You know, that's certainly not enough nurses for 30,000 students to, to be able to offer a basic education in our, our opinion. Class size, class sizes only funded at the state on a formula at grades kindergarten through third grade. That is that lower class size. From that point on, many of the levy dollars goes for providing better class sizes that folks would expect to, to have. Also offers advanced court placement courses. Our highly capable program. We fund more out of the levy than the state provides for special education. Behavioral specialist, a, a number, and then of course, all of our extracurricular activities, athletics, music, art, drama, after-school clubs are all funded by, by the levy. Even curriculum materials that we provide to our students are all kind of those critical foundational things that the levy does fund. And so a replacement levy is critical for us continuing to offer the programs that our community have come to expect us to provide to educate their kids.
Another, just as to accentuate Dr. Anderson's point, we're funded for approximately 20 nurses or, excuse me, 20 counselors for 30,000 students. He mentioned special education, we're funded for approximately one school psychologist for 30,000 students. So you know, we are, we would be unable to provide the educational program that we're both legally required to by some federal statute, such as special education and the experience that we know our kids need that's foundational, that really runs the continuum from interventions all the way to extracurricular. That's not possible without the foundational support of our replacement levy.
So we're going to go back to where we left off last week when we were looking at different EPO levy scenarios. And you'll remember last week, we looked at four different scenarios. And after discussion, it was narrowed down to scenarios three and four that we would carry forward for additional conversation this week. So I'm just going to do a quick refresh on what those scenarios were. Scenario three is where we would start out at $2.40 per thousand for a tax rate. And we would then increase to $2.45 and then $2.50. And this generates 62.1 million at the 240, 245, 250. The 2020, 21 at $2.40 would generate 62.1 million dollars. The $2.45 would generate 77.2 million dollars in 2223. And the $2.50 would generate 83.7 in that final year. And then looking across on the scenario four, we have the increase, the levy amount of 63.5 million in the first year, 79.3 in the next and 84.4 in the final year. Now, these are in comparison to our budget forecasts and you'll notice that our budget forecast was for a higher dollar amount. And when I refer to budget forecast, that's looking back into the budget process that we completed in August where we adopted the 2021 school year budget and we looked out for and it's important as we're looking at these scenarios that we look at this and recognize that this does go out three years into the future. So as we go through this, we'll see that there are things that are going to be happening in our district that are going to impact what our needs are over the next four years. Now, this scenario four, of course, most closely aligns with the four-year budget forecast. Looking at this a little bit different, I know there's a number of people that have said that the graphic presentation is very helpful. This is just looking at what the levy amount would be over the three-year period. Now, the gray is scenario three with this, with the starting out at 240 and graduating up to 250. Scenario four is the flat 250 rate over the three-year period. And the green line then is the four-year budget forecast. And once again, this just shows you that the scenario four is the one that is most closely aligned with that four-year budget forecast. Now, this is getting into the details. When we talked last week, there was a request to see the the budget in a little bit more detail. So we've went back to a similar format that we used early on in our budget process for the 2021 budget cycle. And this really draws out where revenue is coming from. So I'm going to kind of go down first and then we'll look across a little bit as we talk about each line item. Now, the first two lines there on this chart represent the EPO levy. And you'll see the blue column is our adopted budget for this year and you'll see that we have our February 2018 levy amount in that column and you'll see that it carries forward and it's reduced in the forecast for the 2020, 2122 year. That's because it's a calendar year levy and our school year books are on a fiscal year. So all that is, is just reconciling those different calendars together. So when you look down at the next line, you'll see that in 2021, 2022, we are picking up an additional 34.6 million dollars of revenue, which is that first, that first collection cycle on the new levy for the first half taxes. And then you'll see as you go out into the next two years that you see the full amount because we have just converted it from a calendar year to a fiscal year number. The next line down is important to look at in conjunction with the levy because this is our local effort assistance. So this is our LEA funding. And this is where we're receiving some assistance from the state because our district is not, does not have as high a property values as other districts do. So it takes us a higher tax rate to generate the same dollars that a higher property value would generate with a mature rate. So this is something where as our assessed values increase more, our levy, our LEA goes down. And it's not dollar for dollar. So as you look across this line, you'll notice that we had budgeted for 13.4 million dollars in the 2021 school year in the current year. And you'll see that it goes down every year because we are projecting that we will have, continue to have assessed value growth that exceeds the CPI. And it's all based on the CPI or Consumer Price Index. So going down to the next line, our portionment is money's coming from the state, other revenues represent all of our monies coming from federal grants, state grants and other sources. So this brings us to the total revenue and you'll see that our revenue picture is stable and it's slowly increasing over time. Now, when we go down on the expenditure side, we start a budget discussion with a maintenance level expenditures, which is just a roll forward of our, our most recent operating year into the next year. And we do have some provisions for inflation as we go out over the years. Unfortunately, inflation is always going to be there. We have marked this to the implicit price deflator, which is the inflationary factor that OSPI uses for most of their calculations. You will notice the next line, when we adopted our budget, we had some targeted budget reductions. This is where the administrative team has done a lot of work to identify those items and we had shared information with the school board. We are working on implementing all of those. As we look across those lines going out into future years, you will see that it's at 3 million rather than 2 million. The 2 million that we identified this year, we will be reevaluating to see if those reductions can continue forward, making it less that we would have to find additional reductions for. Does that make sense? That would be about a $1 million gap where we would be looking for additional reductions. Now, going forward into program restoration, we had talked about the workload suspension that we currently had and the desire to restore those provisions and for program and staffing. So you will see that we have it specifically as a line item on here and it also has the implicit price deflator increasing those costs because those costs will also increase over time. Once we restore these items, they will flow up into the maintenance level expenditures and just become a portion of that maintenance level budget. The next line is very important because we have new middle schools that we are going to be opening in 2223 and then 2324. So this levy will be funding some of those costs associated with opening those schools as we are realigning our middle school grade levels and creating capacity in our elementary schools for those K3 classrooms to be the, meet the K3 ratio as defined by the state. Now, you'll see as you look across total expenditures, our expenditures are growing. Our expenditures are growing at a higher rate than what our total revenue is growing at at this point in time, which is generating a deficit net operations. And we've looked at this and we are trying to manage our fund balance. So every year, as you're looking at this, you're going to see that we go deficit as we hit the 2223 school year in terms of our ending committed, assigned and unassigned fund balance. What we will be doing is every year when we work through the budget process, we work through and we make decisions related to the budget that will firm up additional information. Once you get one year closer to that year, you have better information and you can refine your numbers. So that'll be part of our process as we go through our budget process this year. Looking at scenario four, these slides are identical other than the amount presented as additional budget reductions, the yellow highlighted line. What this line shows is if we did our scenario four, which is the flat $2.50 per 100, per 100,000 of assessed, or per 1,000 of assessed value, if I could say it correctly. This shows what that additional reduction would have to be to leave us in the same place as we budgeted. So this number is comparable to the number on the previous slide. If we look back, you will see that we were at 2.5 million of additional reductions. And now at $2.50, we're at 1.1 million looking at the 2122 year. So I think we're going to go down to the summary on the next page to help this be all in one page. What this is, is looking at the budget impacts. So we are going to have to make some reductions that we have estimated. And this combines both the targeted reductions we had planned as well as that additional reduction. So under both levy scenarios, we are making reductions to the budget. Though we are making them very intentional and thoughtful with where we are making adjustments. This is going back to the slide that we looked at last week with our Spokane Public Schools and State Schools tax rates. I'm going to draw your attention out to the blue circle on the left, on the right-hand side. And those numbers in the circle are rates that are set locally. The place I want to draw your attention first is the debt service levy. We had a discussion about this over the last couple of weeks and we have shared some preliminary estimates on our financing plan for our bonds to fund our construction. And we are refining that plan and we are able to reduce that tax rate so that we can hold the total schools' tax rate at a lower rate. So you're noticing it's going from an estimate, well, let's go current. If we look current in 2020, it's at $2.59. It's estimated to go up to $2.66 in 2021. And for our planning purposes, we are looking at reducing it to $2.17. It's important to understand that we have reevaluated our plan and our model for financing the bonds and that we feel that we can accomplish all of the work with all of the projects that have been discussed for the next round of bond planning with that tax rate. So when we do that, it frees capacity so that the increase on the total tax rate for taxpayers is not as significant. So if you look at the tax rate in 2017 and 18, your notice 2017 was 791 per 100,000 assessed value and 2018 was $8.46. Looking out at the green column with our levy discussion, if we went to the full 250 rate, our tax rate would be 750 per 100,000. That is less than what our tax rate was in 2017 or 18. Once again, this is just a graphical depiction of the tax rates to make it easier to, to see the comparisons. The blue line segregates what are approved levies on the left-hand side and what is the proposed levies that we're discussing on the right-hand side. And it just shows you very nicely that 16, 2016 through 2018, we were right about or a little over that $8 per 100,000 assessed value and now we're down at 750 or if we choose scenario three, we will be 10 cents lower at $7.40 for 2022 and then it will slowly increase.
So as, as we wrap up and Cindy has worked to follow up on your inquiries from last week, just again, we, we can't understate the impact of our replacement levy on those foundational services. You saw graphically that the, our tax rate in either scenario would be lower to 2018 levels, which is something that we communicated when we ran our last bond initiative was that our citizens could expect that their rate would be moving down in the coming years. And just the reality is that all scenarios will require us to make further budget reductions, that we have to continue to be very good stewards of our fiscal resources. And we'll have to make some challenging decisions to right-side our budget expenditures to our revenue moving forward so that we can have stability for our district and, and slowly replenish our fund balance. So with that, any questions, comments? Again, we are hoping for school board direction on finalizing the rate between scenario three or four. Of course, we could have additional discussion in subsequent weeks, although Dr. Anderson would tell you that we're, we're running out of time. So with that, any questions or comments?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll jump in. First of all, Cindy, thank you to you and your team for bringing together this presentation this week for us. I am, last week I, I mentioned how I, I really like the idea of the gradual increase for multiple reasons and I, and, and I still. for multiple reasons and I, and, and I still stand on that side of it. To me, it doesn't seem like, even though there's a, there's a difference in revenue, it doesn't seem like it's that drastically different in compared to a percentage of, of our overall budget. What are we talking about, like 1%? Okay, um, yeah, so I just, yeah, I just wanted to jump in and say that. Thank you and, and I'm definitely on the side of a gradual tax increase.
Can I ask a question about that? I, you know, the thing that I, I'm wondering about the 2.4 versus, the gradual versus the 2.5 is, is will that difference, will that difference change somebody's mind if they're, they're gonna vote for it? If it's a, do you want to, you have an answer for that, Director?
Um, I, I think it definitely could for sure, especially if, if we factor in what neighboring districts may do. I think it could, it could create a significant difference in, in the mind of the voters. And, and I think when it comes to us messaging, that we are being very thoughtful about the timing and, and trying to be as understanding as possible and work with our community and, and allow for things in our community to recover and rebuild. I think that's potentially important and powerful. So who could say at the end of the day, right? With the 100% certainty, I, I, I think I've been surprised more than once with, with voter outcomes and turnout and I, I think it, it matters.
It's just such a different year than ever before, so it's, it's really hard to, to know and I, I appreciate that. I just wasn't sure if folks were gonna, I'd vote for it either way. That's, that's my voting record, but I, I didn't know if that 1% difference would really tip somebody to vote for it or not.
I think, you know, it's, it's difficult to predict. And I think, you know, when, when someone, you know, sometimes the, the principle of it matters and sometimes the judiciary aspect of it matters and sometimes it's both of it. Dr. Anderson, you've, you've, you've run a number of these. What, what's your, what's your thought to Director Lockwood's question?
Well, I do think that the graduated rate does show some logic on when we will need more money. And as you know, when we open those new middle schools and need to operate three additional middle schools, that's when we need actually more money than today. So I think a part of our thinking on sharing with you a graduated approach was to say it, it did make some logic, it makes some logic to the public. Adam and I'll have to be out and Cindy making, you know, hundreds of Zoom presentations and you can logically say, well, here's, we're, we're being conservative and, and only asking you for the money when we need it. That's kind of one of the logic behind the graduated rate. Not to say that we can't use all of the money at the flat rate 250 now, but it just has some logic to it.
I appreciate everybody's comments, that, that helps. I'm still willing to go with either depending on, on the board. But I, because I, you know, this is, this isn't for this year. This decision is for the next three years and we're going to have a lot of needs in our community, but I do appreciate those, that reasoning behind the graduated.
And I would say the other piece that are thinking, and you gave us direction last meeting about bringing down the bond tax rate so that we can kind of balance the increase or mitigate the increase is, I was the one that went out to 130 community meetings and said, your tax rate's going down from 2018. So it's nice to be able to say, yeah, and it's going to go down.
I think that's an important, important part to communicate.
As a board member who didn't quite support the supplemental levy, I, it's probably no surprise that I support the, this graduated rate. So I think that's where I am leaning also.
Well, the nice thing about either scenario is that we get to 250. And then subsequent levies, we won't be, we won't be having to, to make an additional ask of our, of our voters. And so it gets us on, it, it gets us on that playing field where we can have some consistency in what we're asking on either scenario.
And I guess what sort of sells me on the graduated also is, in addition to the comments here is, you know, Cindy's graph that shows the, the gap between each year to year, right? If we go on the graduated rate, the gap between what we, if we just do nothing and we do exactly the same with our spending as, as we do now and just carry it forward, that gap is about the same with the graduated rate, which means we'd have to make adjustments sort of upfront to prepare for that, that three-year period. And I think we can do that. And I think for those other reasons, it, it makes sense too. And also I think, you know, in either scenario, what is also important to note is that we're going to have to do more cost cutting than even we're in the numbers that Cindy you shared because we can't go into those fund balance rates of, of 0.3% or that sort of thing, right? So if we as a school district will have to do things differently and, and find more cost savings, even going with whatever levy we, we go forward with. So we'll, we'll continue to, to need to work hard to be good stewards of, of these, these funds.
I would just echo that I am, I'm more on the graduated levy side. I think being good stewards of the money that we are asking for is a really important thing, especially considering the impact that we have had based on unemployment rates and things of that nature, just recognizing that, that's a real issue in our community. But also recognizing Director Lockwood, I like what you said, this isn't about this year. This is kind of, this is forecast going forward as well. But I think the graduated is a better way of really hearing both sides.
Okay, if there, there isn't any additional comments or guidance, it, it sounds like scenario three is, is what we're hearing the support for. So we will prepare next steps. Dr. Anderson, would you like to share what, what exactly those next steps look like as we continue our, our lead up to our February ballot initiative? Hope you're on, you're on mute.
Well, the first task will be Cindy and her team getting the plan submitted to the state superintendent's office. That's a new requirement. Then we would work with, Cindy and I would work with Mr. McNeil to get the levy resolution put together for your November 18th board meeting. We have already started working with Sandra and her team along with getting some assistance from DH to put together the information and the facts that we would present to not only first our staff and then to parents of the public. And we would have that ready to go by the 18th, so that's just a couple of weeks from now. So then we would next go out where two or more are gathered and give them the facts and we would this time do it in a different way. And we may be able to reach more people, honestly. As you know, from your board meetings, you've been having board meetings with 1,000 people attending where we may have more folks at neighborhood councils, at various community events and use that, the Zoom or webinars or those types of things to make sure that we have educated our public to the information, what the levy goes for, what the tax rate implication, what the amounts are. All of those are facts that we would need to do between now and mid-January because mid-January is when folks will get their ballots. And up till election day on February 9th. And many people, as you know, the past voting pattern is about half the people vote the day they get their ballot and the other half wait till, till the last day. So, so educating them upfront will be an important part. So Cindy, have I missed any steps that you have to do legally or?
I think the only additional thing I would mention is on November 18th, when we do the resolution for the ballot item for the levy, we will also certify the 2021 levy. So that's going to be the last year on our levy. So it'll just be two resolutions.
I think that gives us the direction we need to start putting the plan together.
Awesome. Well, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Anderson, Cindy and Dr. Swinyard for the work that you've done, but more so for the work that you're going to have to do in the next coming months because those, those road shows I'm sure are going to be interesting. So thank you all and Sandra, because yep, we're going to need it. So thank you all. We appreciate it. We have one more agenda item tonight that's primarily for the school board. It's school board professional development. I would like to give us a 10-minute break before we go to that agenda item. To the rest of the staff members and stuff, I hope you all have a good night. Enjoy the rest of your evening. So thank you to the rest of the board, Rochelle and the superintendent. I'll say 10 minutes from now, we'll start back with Harriet. Thanks, everybody.
And before we check out, third time's the charm. We're going to try one more time to do a construction tour of Shaw, Ontrack and Glover next Monday. So at 2:30. So if you're interested, please let Rochelle know between 2:30 and 5:00. So.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Mondays are just horrible.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll be out of town.
We're looking at the weather forecast, so.
We'll do, we'll do others too, but we've, we've had wind, we've had snow, we've.
Yeah, yeah.
Out of the way.
See you later.
All right. Have a good night, Dr. A. I'll see the rest of the board back here at 6:32.
I'm gonna eat my dinner, just letting you know, just announcing.
Yeah, same here. I saw that it said it was for ninety minutes. It was like, I'm gonna get some dinner here quick.
I didn't read that part.
We're all like three hours of agenda, but we got through the first part faster than planned.
Hey, Harriet, how's it going?
It's going well.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to be seen.
What, what's your background today?
Oh, that is my college, the teachers' college I went to in New York.
Okay. I see a lot of green. It must be upstate New York.
Very upstate.
Okay. All right, well, it seems like everyone's back, so we'll move on to item, agenda item three C, School Board Professional Development, Partnering with the Community Presented by Harriet Martin Morse. Thanks for joining us this evening.
And I apologize for be, being between you and your dinner. It's always tough being the last guy before dinner, but I will try to take that under advisement as we do this. I think everyone knows me and who I am and what I'm about. Currently doing work with Spokane on the boundary adjustments. I'm also on the State Board of Education and a reformed school board member in Seattle for eight years, which is the equivalent, as I tell people, of probably about fifteen to twenty in Spokane, only because of the way things work there. So, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna just talk about community and engagement and how, how boards do that and what are some good practices as a way of checking ourselves and saying, are we doing these things? Are we doing this, the things that are necessary to, to be a high-functioning board? And as you know, in listening to your previous conversation, it's obvious that community engagement and community communication is going to be key in everything that you do, whether it's the levy, whether it's reopening schools, all of those things. They're pivotal to have that good relationship and that good engagement with the community. I'm going to share my screen now. And let's bring this up and do that. And you should see my screen. And so, you know, in the agenda, we're, we're gonna talk about the landscape, what's happening in Spokane right now? What are the best practices that districts around the state and around the country, quite frankly, are using right now? Can you benefit from some of those things? And this other one, I threw this in there because especially with levies coming up and all these other things, how do you communicate with the public as a board, as a unit? And then, what, after we talk about all these things, well, what do we do next? We're gonna, you know, have a conversation, we're gonna talk about all of these things you could be doing. What do we do with all of that information after we get done? So, right now, we know with COVID, it's even more important that we have effective communication with our community. And that, that engagement can have a positive impact on the attitude of teachers, students, and the whole community writ large. And districts and boards that are really effective at, at engaging and connecting with the community, people's attitudes about how you're doing your work are directly affected by that. And then, this one is close to my heart. Community engagement is really an equity issue. And we have to always keep reminding that. That doesn't mean that it's equal. And I always have to remind people that equitable doesn't mean equal. It means getting the things that people need at the time that they need it. That's my personal definition. I think that's a pretty effective one. And so, we want to make sure that all members of our community, and you have a diverse community, how are we communicating with people where they are at? And this is critical, engagement needs to be student-centered. So, we always have to be thinking not, not only about the equitable piece of it, but what is the impact on our students? And are we doing things that are right for our students? Because, you know, I always tell people, if it doesn't help teachers teach and students learn, then why the heck are we doing it? Might as well just fold up shop and go away, cuz that's what we're about as a board. Now, for the landscape, I, this is a question for you. You know, why do you think engagement is important to this board? Not just in, in a, in a generic way, but for you specifically, why is it important? Don't make me call on people, cuz I'm a, I'm a former teacher. I will call on you.
I'll, I'll share. I think engagement is important to this board because for the first time, we are as diverse a board as we are. And I think, you know, definitely our communities, our voters, they, they told us, you know, that representation matters, their, their engagement and their input into our learning environments are important. Just as you said, to ensure that, you know, everything that we're doing is centering on our children and educators.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think you, your last slide hit on it. Honestly, community engagement is an equity issue and, and effective communication and engagement with the community goes a very long way toward the success of a school district, which means it goes a very long way toward the success of our students and staff members. So, us being able to, to effectively communicate with our community and our, and our staff and our teachers in the building is, is vitally important to our success as a board.
This is Nikki. I just want to add that as a person who's part of a coalition that, you know, demanded engagement and over three years really built some good relationships and helped, helped make change in our district. I, you know, I saw the importance of that as a parent. And I, so I, I just think it's just really important to continue to, to serve the community. The community is the school and the school is the community, so it, it's just really important.
Yeah, I agree. Now, where, where do you, where do you think Spokane is in that journey? You know, Nikki, you're saying three years ago that was, you know, you were in this coalition. Where do you think we are now?
Well, that coalition's still going strong and still engaging. And with our new equity policy, you know, there's a lot of, I, I feel like as a board, we're really interested in engaging on that issue. And of course, the pandemic impacts to our, our school and our decisions. I think there's a lot of interest in, from our board, at least, at least I can say for me. And I, I can certainly see that there's a lot of important issues for our community that we would want to get their input.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah. This year, I've seen a drastic change in, in how we engage our community and staff. And I, I think it's been incredibly powerful and I think that that is, that it's reflective in the, 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 the small amount of public comments that we get at school board meetings, even when very, very traditionally controversial topics are on the agenda. Right? It, it was nothing for us in the past, before Zoom was a thing, to have, you know, over a hundred people pack it to the boardrooms and be outside of our buildings, whether it be our unions, community members, you name it, to, to voice their opinions and their concerns about things, right? And I think that a big part of that is a product of people maybe not feeling heard and feeling like that may have been their only avenue or their only way to be heard and cared for in an adequate way. And I think that, that we've seen a lot of shifts recently and a lot of changes recently. And I think that that's very reflective. When we have, we now have school board meetings, like Dr. Anderson said earlier, where, you know, a thousand people show up, right? And, and we may have one comment for that evening and, and it's just, it's just amazing to me, right? We're, we're much more easily accessible now, especially when it comes to our public meetings, but we're getting drastically less public comments, especially on the complaint side of things. So, I would like to, to think that that is reflective in the improvement in our community engagement.
I would add that, that I, I think there has been a recognition that particularly this school board is, is authentic and is relational and, and is, is community-minded. And so, I, I think that has helped build some trust. And I think it's brought some voices to the table that maybe would have not historically come to the table because they just assumed based on historical context that the leaders weren't gonna listen and weren't, weren't gonna authentically listen and be responsive. Where I think every day that goes by with this group, I think that trust and credibility is being established. And then I would, I would echo what Director Lockwood said of some of the structures that have been built the last few years to create a vulnerable space for, for district leadership to come and, and, and be responsive and field questions. And, and we've created some of those spaces that I think have built some relationships and some sense of community that, that didn't exist previously.
Good, good. And this next question is more kind of, you've kind of answered that a little bit by giving some very specific examples. But I guess it's in a generic way, how do you think the district's doing? How do you, how do you think? You know, how's it going?
Do we have a number scale or what do we have?
Well, you're, you're thinking, okay, from your perspective, probably Nikki, think about what it was before and what it is now. And I think Jarell was talking about the same kind of thing. It's different, it's better. We're on the, would you say we're on the right path?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think that in, in a time like what we're experiencing right now, it, it would historically be very, very easy to point out a lot of shortfalls and shortcomings. But I have been incredibly encouraged by staff and leadership's responses to our, to our current, current climate and, and their ability to shift and think ahead and plan and replan and replan and plan again over and over and over again, especially over the course of the last seven months. It's been amazingly encouraging. I know what, one confirmed case from our buildings, that's, that's insane, right? And, and for staff to be working as hard as they are and, and for leadership to, to still be able to continue to, to build strong relationships and, and be able to take care of their staff members in thoughtful, productive ways. I, I'm, I'm hopeful for the, for the future of the district. I think, I think it's hard to evaluate it today because all of the old original metrics don't matter today. Right? So, so from a subjective sense, that's difficult. But, but I think the feeling is so drastically different. And, and, and in such a positive place right now, even though we have every reason and every excuse for it not to be.
Good point, good point. And if I were to ask, it's not on here, but if I were to ask students how they feel right now, and granted, you know, it's, it's a lot, the COVID thing really is impactful in terms of what people's attitudes are. But even with that, do you, how do you feel students are feeling in terms of their connection to, to the schools, to, to their teachers, to their schools, to their communities right now?
This is Mike, sorry, I had the internet problems, had to redo it, the whole thing. So, I'm just kind of catching up here on the context, but I figure I'll, I'll jump in. I think students are showing that they're very flexible and can, can take on, you know, more challenges, I think, than we sometimes give them credit for. But at the same time, my sense is that most, most students, they, they miss the interactions and want to be back in the classroom with other students for the most part. I mean, and I think prior to COVID, I think like any large school district, we had a lot of students who were super connected and have participated in, in lots of different activities and very engaged and some who are a small, small group who's, who's actively, you know, not engaged. And then a lot in the middle who are, school is, is small, small group who's, who's actively, you know, not engaged. And then a lot in the middle who are, school is, is um, just sort of, um, just sort of something they do and, and need to get through. So it's like, it's hard to judge, you know, in overall sense, but.
Yeah, and, and, and the, and the virus really has mucked up everything that we would think of in terms of how we would measure that and how we look at and every, but you know, teaching self-care for not only our adults, but also thinking about it for our kids as well is if people are engaged and you are telling them and you're showing that sense of just asking that simple question, how are you doing? How are you? You know, how, how are you doing today? You know, I know my wife, when she, she's teaching at the U and everything is, she's teaching one online and one in-person class. And that's always how she starts. Just asking her students how they're doing. And we, in essence, have to do the same thing with the community. And you know, going out to them and saying, hey, how, how's it going for, for you or your organization or your family? You know, when people hear that, first of all, it throws them off. It's like, well, why are you asking? But it's because I care and I want to know. And because if there's something we can do to help, we're going to do that for you. So sometimes the questions we ask are more helpful to our cause than we even realize and are more powerful to. And we'll talk a little bit more about, well, how do we get to those spaces when we talk about some of the best practices that folks go, that folks are using right now? Now.
Oh, can I just, can I just say, um, it would probably be beneficial to, to the board um, to have our new student advisors that we just appointed um, to, to attend sessions like such as these. Um, to really get some of their, the student perspective as you asked.
Absolutely. It's, I, I, amen. You know, you, you, you're one of the very few, not many districts still don't have students on their board. And it becomes almost like window dressing, you know? See here, here, see how good we are. We have students sitting up here on the dais with us, you know? But what are we giving those students to do? Are we listening to those students? Are we asking the students how things are going for them? I, I, we used to see that all the time in Seattle. I saw it in Boulder as well, where the board turned to the students at, at every meeting and asked that question. What's on the minds of students that you're talking to, that you're interacting with right now? And that gets to this, how do you know what the community wants?
Just really quick, Jenny, first of all, thank you for bringing that up. It's funny that you brought it up because I texted our student advisors and, and asked the question after Harriet asked it. And uh, I responded that students are coping with being disconnected and feeling distressed about issues that they cannot address on their own. And so that was the response from one of our student advisors to the board.
That's pretty powerful and impactful, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
We, we, and so then we turn to people like Adam and go, well, I'm sure this is not the only kid in our district that's feeling that way. Is there something we can do to help with that?
Can I also add something?
Sure.
Because a mom messaged me who's listening, um, Ed, that there's no uh, student leadership with that special education kind of lens that she knows of. So I don't know exactly the makeup of our student advisory committee to the superintendent, but anyway, we're getting uh, we're getting uh, real-time engagement.
Yeah. So there is a student advisory com- committee that meets with the superintendent on a regular basis. And I'm assuming those are the class president or the school presidents from the ASBs usually. That's how most of those kind of work.
Yeah, the, the structure's changed through the years. It, um, it's been, most recently, it's been students that principals have identified, not necessarily ASB or traditional leaders in the school, which I think has been helpful. And I think we need to do more of to reach out to the kids that aren't just the traditional ASB uh, kids. And then it's also the students who apply to be the advisor to the school board. It's the students that interview and, and aren't selected. They're also invited uh, to be a part.
Okay. That's, that's a good model. I like that model. Most, most places don't do it that way, quite honestly. It usually it's the people that are already the leaders within their school and within the student councils that roll up to the board typically. So I like the idea of principals being involved in identifying potential, you know, leaders in the rough that could be very valuable to you. What about other parts of the community? How, how do you, how do you hear what folks want? How do you know what their expectations are?
Well, we, I think, you know, the thought exchange tool, are you familiar with that? That's, that's been pretty helpful to, to kind of see the, the dialogue in a little bit more authentic way. And then, you know, for big changes, I think there's been uh, powerful, like with middle, middle school reconfiguration and you're involved with the boundary stuff. For those types of big changes, you know, we go to school, schools and hold events across the town and have small table groups and, and you can hear from, from uh, individuals in a more personal level. So that's, that sort of format we've come back to a few times since I've been on the board and, and that's good. But um, yeah, you know, probably the, the most ongoing feedback are sort of emails from the public that are not solicited. They just kind of come, come our way and, and then our, our personal connections that we each have with with the public.
And, and we'll talk a little bit more in best practices. There are some other tools in the toolkit that can help you get that information uh, in direct ways. And we'll talk about those as well under the best practices section. And so that brings us to that, you know, when you do get that feedback, when you do get stopped, I use, I always use Safeway as the example because that used to happen to me on a regular basis. You go to Safeway to do your shopping and a parent knows you are on the school board and they stop you. And they start advocating for a particular thing. Or there are certain groups that do the same thing. How do you, you know, how do you respond to that, to those groups, to those individuals? And not in the environment of not just the loudest voice wins, because there are some groups that are going to be very loud. They may not be representative of anything but a, a small cluster, or it may be a, even a large cluster. But how do you respond to those individual and group advocacy that happen on a daily basis? What do you do?
Uh, we have Mike respond to that. He's, he's our board correspondent right now. I'm just teasing. I think, I don't know if you were there for the first part of our school board meeting, but we about looking at our reopening plan, but you know, okay, yeah, just really centering our decision on, you know, uh, public health guidance. I mean, in, in this very hot topic and just really important topic that's, that's going on right now for everybody everywhere. But um, I think that that's been really helpful in anchoring with that um, public health uh, focus to, to um, address the, the really spectrum of opinions on, on the pandemic and its impact to school and how we do it. That's an example.
So do you have a way? So when you do get that stop in the safe way, is there a way that that can, do you have a protocol or a mechanism or a procedure or process to how to bring that to a larger school board audience? You say, hey, and I, I heard someone say, I got stopped, you know, some, a parent asked me this. You know, how do you handle those things as a board? Do you have a set of norms or a procedure or something that you can use to kind of elevate those concerns or things that you hear about?
Yeah, I, um, I think that it depends on the content or the context of, of the communication, right? If, if it's, if it's a parent, you know, reaching out in regards to a school-based complaint or classroom-based complaint, um, we, we try to get in contact with either our school directors or or, or, or we send the parent back down to the principal level or school director level so that they can be best supported. I think, I think it's very important to not commit to anything when, when you're approached and, and, and you have these conversations with people and remind people that, you know, that you're one member of a five-person board. And, and if it's on a topic that the board has already been engaging in, just re, further reaffirm the stances that the collective board has made as a unit. Um, but yeah, honestly, it, it depends on the nature of the topic at hand.
And that's true. Uh, some things you will send back to the principal. Other things, depending on what it is, it may go to a committee or a work group or someone like that and say, this is what I'm hearing. I'm just letting you know. And let's address it at that level instead. So you're absolutely right. It does depend. There's no one answer. And it varies depending on what, what the concern, complaint or issue is, which you get all of. So let's go right into some of the best practices. The most important thing that you want to make sure that you have is that you have some agreed upon norms and that those norms are written down. Uh, so that everyone can say, as a board, this is how we do our engagement. This is how we communicate. This is how we do the things that we do as a, as a board unit. And I, I know there was some that was, that did some training with you about school board norms. And that's good, but now you gotta kind of pivot and take the next step and, and make sure that those things are written down and so that everyone can agree to those things. Because what Nikki might be hearing may be different than what Mike is hearing. And it's the same norm, but it kind of gets twisted a little bit depending on who's hearing it. So that's why it's important to write those things down. So if, again, thinking about high-functioning boards, this is one of the things that you always see that they have in common is this, the writing down of the norms. Sometimes they'll even have another document that's a belief document. So you may have a belief statement and a belief document around community engagement. And you're communicating that out to the community and say, these are our beliefs. This is why we think it's important. This is how we feel about this and this is how we're going to act on these things. And when the community sees that, then they know you for real. You know, because once you write it down, people will hold you to it. As opposed to just having something that just kind of floats around and is kind of amorphous. You, you don't want that. Not when it comes to engagement. You want to give it as clear a possible picture as you can for the community to consume. And once you have those norms, you're not done. Because every year you should be going back and looking at those and go, is, is this still work for us? Is there something we learned over the last year that wasn't in there this, you know, last year when we looked at this? So it's a living, breathing document. It's just like, you know, writing policies. You don't write a policy and just say, hands, you know, wash your hands of it. Okay, we got that done. No, you do it and then you come back and you review it. The same thing with your norms. It's something that, it's a constant, growing, evolving kind of thing. Another one of those things that you, I think you have started that process, if I'm correct. But you're right at the beginning stage of it. You haven't gone beyond.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would say, I know it's one more, you know, pound of manure, you know, you're trying to pin 10 pounds of manure in a five-pound sack. I get it. But this one's so important that you really have to do that. Okay. And then another one, and again, part of this is pre-COVID, but we can adapt a little bit. And board members should have regularly scheduled opportunities for the community to connect with them directly. Whether that's virtual coffee or office hours or something where the community knows that you're going to be there and they can come and connect with you directly in those places. When I was in Seattle, uh, for all eight years, every month except for the month of August, I would have a, a coffee hour at one of the local coffee shops and I would move it around. And I would always publicize that at the board meeting, you know, on this date, I'm going to be there. Uh, I never had less than 20 people show up. Sometimes I had more. If there was a topic, you know, for that community.
How do you manage 20 people at once, though?
Uh, well, luckily, our public libraries have some great conference rooms. And I had standing uh, use of those rooms that I, when I, when I needed to schedule the, one of those rooms, I just booked one of their biggest rooms and.
And that was just, that was you as an individual.
Yeah. Yeah, several other board members did it too. Actually, I, I learned it from a board member that was on the board when I joined. And I think she was the only one that was doing it at the time. And I thought, that makes a lot of sense.
I, I like it. I, I was wondering about that myself, but um, I, I like that idea. Obviously have to be more of a Zoom situation.
Right. Uh, and in fact, more likely than not, you'll get more people because it is than you would when, because you know, people have to be committed. They got to get in their car. They got to drive somewhere, you know? Whereas Zoom, they can be sitting in their pajamas and just, you know, kind of join in.
I, I think when I, what I meant though is like, if you have 20 people, are those 20 people all there for one issue? Or are those 20 people there for 20 different reasons?
You know, it's three or four people from the same school that have an issue with that school. Sometimes it's 10 or 15 different issues. It all depends on the cycle that you're in. For example, if we have been doing this back in the middle school configuration times, I would venture to guess that probably would have been more than half of the conversation would have been around that. And so it does fluctuate. So what I would do is have people sign in and tell me when they sign in what the topic is. So that I could scan through and see if I have three, four, five people with the same thing. I can kind of condense those five people into one conversation and not have 20 separate conversations that's on the same topic. So that's just managing, but.
Question about that. Had you ever had like media show up to your coffee? Or your coffee hours?
Nope. And this is Seattle. And so if they didn't show up in, in Seattle, they, I don't think they'll show up anywhere. But yeah, in, in my eight years, I'd never had media show up.
Was that for an hour? We're asking you the real details.
That's all, I mean, that's why Adam wanted me to do.
Yeah.
I usually scheduled it for two. Because I wanted to be fair, fair to people.
Yeah, okay. And once a month?
Yeah, one, I did it once a month. Uh, and the the local businesses loved it. You know, the coffee shops around town thought it was, this is great. You know, because people come in, they grab a cup of coffee and then they would sit around the table and we'd talk. And then move on. Then when the coffee shops got too small, I moved it to the library.
Did you, um, you know, I I could imagine that people might get the idea that that would be a a place to bring issues about their school, you know, to elevate issues that really you can only as a board member kind of say, well, actually, you know, first step is the principal or first step is the teacher. Is that, that, was that not a, that didn't end up being most of what your discussions were? It was, it was more sort of.
Surprisingly, I mean, there were some times when that would happen, you know, a particular school, a group of parents had a concern about something that was going on in a particular school. And then you go back to, you know, have you taught, you know, what have you done before you came to me with this? Did you talk with the principal about it? What was the, you know, what happened after that?
Yeah.
You know, in some cases, if I, if I know something is gonna happen, I've had occasions where I've brought staff members to my coffee meeting with me that could help address that issue right then and there. And because, because you build those relationships, people will tell you, you know, ahead of time, I'm planning to come to your coffee hour and I'm gonna talk about this. And if it's something that I think I may need additional support in, I'll I'll bring in a staff person. And that most of them are always willing and able to come and help with that because that was part of their engagement for them is to be able to answer those questions directly.
Yeah.
As opposed to waiting to a board meeting and, because you can't answer a question like that at a board meeting, you know.
Right.
So, so that was how we, that's how we leverage that. Uh, and obviously, you know, the thing that you're already doing, you know, attending community events. And I would always say, attend community events, not in your community. In other words, get outside of your zone. Yeah, unlike, you know, Spokane and Seattle, you're voted on by districts. So the city is carved up into seven districts and the people in that district vote for you. And in the primary, and then in the general, everyone votes on you, but they can only pick one person for the seat in each district. And you have to live in that district. Whereas in Spokane, it's a little bit more, it's more open, you know, you can live anywhere and be on the board. Which means that if you get into a situation where there are concentration of board members that live in a particular region of the city, uh, we gotta get people outside of that region. And so that's where you as a, as a group need to think about that and go, you know, I'm planning to be up here. You know, I'm gonna work with with the schools in the community up in this region, even though that's not where I'm living at right now, or I'm not really connected to that region, but I'm gonna go there. And I think people really respect that when, when you go to a place uh, that they don't expect you to be, you know, because they think you're for the others. And this is a way of showing, no, I'm I'm here for every student in this district. That's why I'm here. You know, so that's, that's something you can talk about and have a conversation on. If you decide this is something you're going to do, this is where you have to communicate also with your fellow board members so that they know, hey, you know, you know, Nikki's gonna be in the northeast and, you know, Mike's gonna be down in the southwest and, you know, so that you got some coverage.
We do have a concentration as far as where we live. But there's different kinds of diversity, right?
Yeah.
So geographic diversity, we don't have on the board right now.
Yeah.
But in terms of the relationships that we have in the community, there's a lot, I think, a lot of diversity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's, there's different things, but I do like that idea of being intentional about.
Yeah.
So we have, I'll just ask you what you think of it. So we have a list of schools that we visit and I think that they just have them, you know, spread out into um, elementary, middle, and high school. And I think probably the the list is fixed. Please help me, J- Jorrell and Mike. And then maybe the school board members just move over a slot and then visit the next list. But that's pretty spread out geographically. It's not, it's not regional, a regional list, like it's not all the schools, you know, in northwest or northeast, but it's it's pretty spread out geographically. Is that?
Yeah.
We are hidden.
Yeah. It's just so, so that you're hearing from different places at different times. That's really how you do that. You know, you do whatever works for you as a, as a group. But that sounds like something that works for you and I would encourage that.
Yeah, one, one thing I did only, I think only once, maybe twice, I was attend a PTG meeting that I didn't, had no connection with myself, you know. And I felt that, I found that a really good experience, like, and I keep meaning to do it more, but maybe uh, have to reconsider.
And, you know, when you're connecting with those, the PTSAs or PTAs or whatever parent group that's governing that school, you know, it's good to build those relationships as you go through your years. Those will become very important because quite honestly, that's also harvesting potential board members that will be coming up in the future. Many, many PTSA parents become board members. Yeah.
A question, and maybe it's for Adam or um, Dr. Svennerd. Um, are PTGs meeting virtually now that our school year has started?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they've, yeah, most of them have transitioned to PTGs and and just like what we've experienced. Um, it's, it's helped participation uh, quite a bit.
Yeah, I think that that's, gosh, I think we should be taking the advantage of those meetings and I'd welcome some invitations.
And sometimes you may not get an invitation, sometimes you just invite yourself. You know, you just say, hey, you know, I see you have a meeting coming up. I'm planning on being there, just so you know. You know, uh, and and quite frankly, they appreciate that. You know, they, they want to connect with you. Uh, some people just don't think they can. So by you jumping in and just saying, I'm, I'm gonna be there. They're like, great, take that off my shoulders, you know, because th- they really do want you. Because they look at that as an opportunity to highlight their school and what's going on at their school, because everyone wants to show off, you know? So, so use it. It's, I think it's important. Uh, again, take advantage of whatever opportunities you can to have direct community uh, connections. Other things. Uh, a dedicated district staff person for community engagement. Now you do have that. It's new. Uh, I looked at the website and it was a little thin because it didn't really say what the Office of Family and Community Engagement does. But there are people that work there. Um, so that's just something that, Adam, I'm gonna leave that one on your plate to work on. Uh, but that's, that's something that we can drive people to as well. And make sure that they understand that there is an office dedicated to getting them engaged. And can not, can just not only communicating, but engaging with them, listening and giving feedback. That two-way part that is truly engaging. Uh, and then have an action plan. What, what is it? Do you want to accomplish around engagement? What's the plan? It's, it's great that you have a, you know, a staff dedicated to it. But what's the goals? What's the objectives? What's the plan for how they're going to do this?
That's a really good point, um, because I know many of us, you know, um, as we're talking to community partners, um, organizations, we're directing them to the Office of Family Engagement and like, okay, that's, that's in your bucket now. But, you know, without giving them like some uh, framework of of what we would hope would come from it, then you know, that that's really important.
Yeah, and and I think you as a board should be crafting some, what are your expectations for that? That office, so that they know, you know, how they know, how will they know if they're being successful? What's the, what's the parameters? What are the metrics to say that we are successfully doing family and community engagement? And you as a board should know what those things are. Uh, which is why I put this other bullet in there is that there should be, that office should be reporting. Now, I know they're on the leadership team now. Which is, that's right, so that the superintendent is hearing directly from the most senior person that's involved in connecting with, with the community and engaging families.
Could we, could we consider our equity uh, resolution and our priorities that we set as the, as the framework with that? Or would, do we need to go deeper than that?
I think you may need to go deeper. You know, um, I, I look at those policies and the frameworks. It's just that that's kind of the surrounding part of the circle, but we need to get in, the plans and the things you want to do are much more action-oriented, more direct, you know? We say, we, we want to engage, say, community-based organizations. Okay, how are you, what's, how are you gonna do that? And what types of organizations are we talking about? Uh, so the, the po- equity policies and things like that are saying more about, here's how we're going to behave once we're in doing the work. But we need to have something deeper than just the framework to say, this is exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. So that you can see those things visibly, which is why we get to that last point, which is provide twice-a-year reports to the board. If we're saying that in get family and community engagement is important, then you as a board need to be hearing that directly from the office that's responsible for handling that. Where they can give you those metrics of, these are the things that we're working on, these are the things that we're done, these are the things we're planning to do in the future. Here's the processes we have in place so that you have a high degree of confidence that it's just not a name on the wall, but it's actually doing the things that you want it to do. And you need to hear those things.
I think, I think that really resonates. And I, I think we've made some steps towards that. And as Director Slagle referenced, you know, some of the really specific things that we said we were gonna do in the Equity Resolution have has been assigned uh, to that office, that that they're responsible for leading that, but there's been some other pieces that have happened organically. So I, um, it really resonates, the idea of having a really focused conversation around what the board wants to accomplish, in addition to the priority goal that we've established around equity that have been assigned to them. But what are those other things and how are we gonna measure it? Um, so I think we've taken some steps there, but also some pieces have happened pretty organically over the last few months of of what that looks like. And now it feels like we kind of have a couple of different pieces. Um, we have a couple of different groups that we connect with. We have our Diversity Advisory Council. We have a Superintendent's Worker. We've got these different pieces. And so how do they all fit together in a real intentional way?
Right, and and we, I would see that office as the place where all that coalesces. Because they should be overseeing how all those things are flowing and and working, you know, are they working well? Uh, so that, you know, there's the clearinghouse aspect of it, you know? Any of those engagements, they should be very aware and very engaged with and know what's happening with. Not that they have to direct everyone, but they should be at least very aware of all of those involvements uh, in it. So I can't, that one is almost non-negotiable to me. You got it. You have to have some of those things. Um, this is another one that's be becoming more and more popular. Um, it's called Community Connectors. And these are people throughout the different community organizations and family groups um, that the district are, there's their go-to people when they want to get a message out or get information in. Um, so if we think about the Hispanic community, monolith or anything, but there are several organizations that are very involved in the Hispanic community. They have, they are excellent at getting out to their constituents information. We should be using those. Uh, and so those community connectors uh, are really important and pivotal to helping you get your message out and getting info, making it a two-way street, so you're also getting stuff back. You know, uh, being that your city is also one of those resettlement communities. Um, you know, hearing from uh, those families that may have different cultural and social things. Uh, especially when it comes to authority and teachers and other things, that they may not be coming to you. But there are organizations that know those families in those communities really well. And we should leverage those things.
Your example with the Latino community, we, Adam and I were in a meeting with a outreach coordinator. We were just talking about this. So this is, this is in the works.
Good.
But I was thinking, I was like, oh, that's, that was our conversation we had with Boga.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, very, I guess that must make it, make sense. Um, and I don't know if you have one yet, but it's something to think about is to have a family and community engagement advisory committee. Uh, that can work with the superintendent and and advise the board as well. You know, this is that, how, you know, finding out from the ground, you know, do you feel connected? Are you engaged? What do, what can we do better? What's missing? You know, it's that go-to place where you can find those things out. And that way you can take advantage of the different social groups, socioeconomic groups, regional groups, and bring all of that to coalesce in in this one uh, one committee. Uh, and again, it's just to be there to advise you, is to take the temperature of the community. And you guys are really good. You know so many people in so many of the different communities. I'm always been amazed when I sit and talk with, you, you know, uh, with Mark or anybody, they know people right down to the granular level. Oh, you're looking for this? Yeah, here's the person you need to talk to. You know, so we know all those things, but let's, let's codify it in in a group that can help us and support us. Right? So this one I threw in only because I discovered it today. You know, granted, not everyone has internet access as much as we would like, and there's the digital divide and making things accessible, but make sure that your website really does support non-English speakers. Uh, right now, if you go, you couldn't, the translate button to switch to other languages, you're using Google Translate for your website, is at the very bottom in the footer. You, if, and if you're not looking for it, you will never find it. That should be at the very top. That should be at the very top. And when you click on it, unfortunately, I tried seven different languages. And unfortunately, Google Translate Translate breaks your website navigation. So that it'll translate some things, but the tabs that say, you know, about our school and all the things that are at the top, they all disappear. The dropdowns work if you happen to go into this big blue area and happen to put the mouse over it, it drops down and you can see the dropdown. But again, if you're new to this whole thing and we just wiped out any accessibility for any of those families to be able to navigate with their language.
Haryam, I have noticed that too. I mean, I had the somebody show me where the translate button was, which I didn't, I didn't know, but it wouldn't help me. I don't speak Spanish, but I did want to see how accessible it was. But are are there best practices around, you know, accessible school websites or any, you know, just for for multiple languages? There's so many different governmental agencies that have to do this, so.
And so most are using Google Translate right now, A, because it's free. And it can get at languages that you wouldn't normally be able to get to. It's not perfect, but it's good enough to get families the information if they're re if they're able to read in the language that, you know, because a lot of families, I know a lot of Hispanic families where the parents don't really read Spanish. You know?
Yeah, we have two communities, the Spanish and the martially or Spanish speaking and then martialise that aren't necessarily able to read.
So that's a different problem, but I would say commonly, the best practice that I've seen in majority of districts, at least in this state, they use Google Translate only because of just ease of use. But that means that you also need to go back and check your website. Once you've done the translation that it didn't break anything in your website because you may have to do some tweaking of your site to make that happen. So and then I think you're already comply ADA compliant. I didn't test that to make sure because we had a lot of districts and OSPI was also one of them. Where the website was constructed in a way that the screen readers that visually impaired people use to navigate websites didn't work. But I think you're okay, though. With that one, I didn't test it, but I I think so. Just by what I saw, it looked like you had everything set up correctly for for the visually impaired for your website. Then we can talk about hearing impaired later and how we're gonna deal with that one. But so again, that that was just a spontaneous, I don't even know what drove me to, but I just happened to be there. And I saw that, so I wanted to call that out to you guys, just so you're aware of it. Because the very families that might take advantage of that may not say anything about it to you. Okay, then the last topic, and I'll let you have your dinner, is communicating with the public. I've left that separate from engagement, but I think it's a topic that's worth at least a few minutes of conversation. Here's here's the rule. If there is ever a board, school board rule, this is one. Understand that the board president speaks for the board. Having said that, when you go out into the public, for example, if you had a coffee hour, people are gonna assume that you, when you speak, that you are speaking for the board, even though you're speaking as an individual. So just be cognizant, be aware that what you say, you know, is gonna be reflected back as the board speaking, even though that was not your intent. You may be given your own personal opinion. And we'll talk about that one in a second, too. But always, if you will get in less trouble with the public, if you let the board president speak for the board. And that brings to the concept that the power of the board is through unity. People need to see the board as a as a unified block, even when you disagree. And well within your right to do that. But be aware that even when you disagree, try not to do that outside of the board and committee meetings. You know, in the board, in a board or committee meeting, you can say, I am concerned about this. I don't like this, or I don't like this direction. That's fine. That's cool. But don't go into a community and start blasting something that the board has decided to do. It does not help the board cause and it creates rifts that don't necessarily necessarily need to be there, which brings us back to that whole idea of norms. If we say in our norms, this is how we're going to behave when we talk with the community, when we communicate with the community. You you will avoid that landmine. I've seen many a good board go down in flames. Because a couple of board members didn't like a particular decision and they went rogue. You know, they start talking at PTA meetings or to the press or whatever, and it never ends well. It always creates a spy, a death spiral for the board. So unity, you don't always have to agree, but you should always be unified. Now to you, what do you see? What are the one, two, three things that you see should should happen next? There's a lot of stuff out there, but.
For for us to to shore up our our board norms, to get that finished, like you said, there's a whole lot going on, but that is very important toward the health of the continued health of our board. I think that we're in a pretty healthy space right now, and I'd hate for that to be ruined. It's simply because of misunderstandings or miscommunications from either myself or any of my fellow board members. I think that's that's very important. I think working with the Office of Family and Community Engagement and and our new communications director, Sandra, on 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 developing a strategic communications plan and working with Dr. Swinney, obviously. And 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 just sharing up that conversation and making sure that that we're supporting them as much as possible in that process. And and let them know that that we're here and available to to be a very vital, important piece in the community engagement aspect. I I I think Director Slagel and Director Lockwood both mentioned earlier that that we are a very diverse board. And and with that being the case, I think it's very important, it's important for our community to see us period, right? But I but I think it's even more so important. Because representation matters and in our community, being able to see thoughtful, caring leaders show that they're thoughtful and they're caring is important also toward the continued health and success of our district. So those are two or three quick immediate steps that I can think of.
Anyone else?
Sounds like there's kind of interest in maybe individually in kind of engaging, like you said, with with coffees or or PTGs or both. So I think, you know, as we maybe each think about those things, we we share, you know, each board meeting, we have time to share what we've accomplished, not each regular board meeting, we share what we've done in terms of community engagement. So we can, I think, continue kind of coming back to that, I think, and checking in on on what works and and where maybe be a little bit more specific about are there gaps in the community in terms of areas or or groups or even schools, maybe that that need extra attention or or could use extra ears?
Yeah, exact. And that's as you get out more and more to when schools really start getting up to speed again, there will be things that you'll be able to do for those schools. You know, a school may have an event. And use this, you know, use the school board meeting to highlight that event for that school. You know, I was big, you know, there was one school in the south end of town that has this beautiful greenhouses and they grow all of these plants and they have a plant sale every year, just, you know, before garden planting season is. And, you know, you can get heirloom tomatoes and do all those things. So at a board meeting, I say, hey, don't forget, you know, Cleveland High School, you know, is having their annual plant sale. And if you're looking for a great bargain on, you know, heirloom plants for your vegetable garden, go there. You know, those kinds of things can only help build your credibility as caring people because you took the time enough to know, A, that was happening and B, to help drive people to that of that.
And that kind of makes me think that your your board meetings were probably televised in some way or streamed.
We have our own ta table channel.
Yeah, okay. We used to, but I think a few of us have commented that now with with Zoom working so well that we want to maintain that going forward to another important step to maintain that ability to connect. And when I was talking to principals yesterday, Monday, it was like a bit of a light bulb, like when they have, when they were saying, when they, when their staff has questions, they're like, oh, if you want to find out what the decision-making process is, you know, you can go attend the attend the board meeting, just turn on Zoom and you can see what's going on. And, you know, staff are like, oh, okay. That's how it works. And it just it it seemed, I think it really has helped build buy-in to not make this process, oh, yeah, you have to, you know, spend your whole evening, go downtown and and open up the hood and what's going on. But it's it's transparent and that's a big deal.
Yeah. Use it. It's there. The technology is there to be used and it's helpful to you. It can be.
Haryam, did you say, like, an engagement, did you say an engagement plan, like create an engagement plan? Because that kind of includes everything that that Mike just brought up. So beyond a a board norms, maybe an engagement plan, because that can always be something we you know, fine tune and and adjust, like, obviously, if we would have had one before, we would have adjusted it for this year. But we we did adjust. But so, yeah, I just see if we have that, then we can and get down some of those ideas of what you do. And we might find other ideas from other, you know, other boards, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and again, I mean, there are hundreds of ideas out there, but I wanted to give you just a sense of some things that you can do right away. And be successful.
Yeah, I just, I would say those two things for sure. And then the third thing I think of is just kind of looking at our Office of Family and Community Engagement and just, you know, looking at that and and seeing if it's what else we need to do there. So.
So I want to thank you. I will tell you now, because I promised your superintendent, this is not a one-time deal. So this is not a one and done. My intent is to come back with you again in a couple of months. And we can talk in in more depth. And we can pick particular topic if you want around engagement. And I'm gonna I'm gonna be in Spokane for a while anyway. So you know, I'm more than willing and able to help you on this journey. I want to do it because I think you guys have got the right mindset to be probably one of the more high-functioning boards out there. And I would expect, quite frankly, that next year I would see you on the list for distinguished boards through WASDA, since I'm a judge in that, too. If you can do this work, you will have an unbelievable story to tell.
Yes, sir. Well, I want to thank you for taking the time out to be so supportive of all the important work that's going on in our school district, whether it's with the boundaries or with us developing and continuing to grow and progress as a school board. It's it's important and it's very much appreciated.
My pleasure, my pleasure. And thanks, Adam, for asking me to do it.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, I really appreciate all this. Thank you, Haryam.
No problem, no problem.
See you Thursday at the boundary meeting, right?
Tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, is it tomorrow? Right. So when you say you're in Spokane, do you mean virtually? When you said you're you'll be in Spokane for a while, do you mean virtually?
Yes, well, for all of the work that, you know, between the boundary work and other things, I am connected to Spokane for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I think that helps.
You can't go anywhere now.
That's a good, that's a good thing for us, yes.
And there's no excuse when we're all virtual.
I don't have to worry about hopping on a plane or doing any of that stuff or driving over the mountains, none of that, so.
Right, right.
I I am here for you guys.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Have a good night and I'll see you tomorrow night and we hope to hear from you soon on at not the next board work session, because that'll be on Board Superintendent Relationships. And I think we might be planning someone else for that. And then I just imagine that you'd come after that one again.
Okay.
Potentially, so.
No problem.
I look forward to it.
Okay, you guys have a good rest of the evening.
You do the same, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good night.
So we're done?
Yeah, we actually get to adjourn.